Call this meeting to order, you can join me in a split to the flag.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody, welcome to Unionvale. We are going to, the way we're going to operate this evening, I'll have more instructions in a couple of minutes to let you know how we're going to work, but the very beginning of this meeting is like a regular town board meeting. We're going to open the meeting, we are going to introduce some guest speakers, and we're going to let them present, then we'll close that meeting and open a public hearing. Okay? So at this point, I wanted to, I would like to introduce two speakers this evening. Number one is Ray Vergatti, the regional manager from Homeland Towers, and Robert Gaudioso, the attorney from Snyder &amp; Snyder, representing Homeland Towers. I want to welcome you both. I know you have an interesting presentation for us, and I'd just like to turn the floor over to you and let you present as you want.
I'll squeeze over here, so as I point to some of the graphics, everyone could see. Thank you supervisor, members of the town board, public. For the record, Ray Vergatti, I'm the regional manager for Homeland Towers. Homeland Towers is out of Danbury, Connecticut. We are a tower developer, we are not a carrier. We simply build the infrastructure, such as these facilities, where companies such as Verizon Wireless, T-Mobile, Sprint, AT&amp;T, Public Safety, co-locate their antennas on the facilities. So we've been working with the town of Unionvale for approximately a year and a half. There's a coverage need here and capacity need for Verizon right now. They are a co-anchor on the application, that's before the town board. So we have looked to site a wireless facility and to get your bearings, this is basically an aerial view. We have Route 55 running east to west with Poughkeepsie off in this area, Pauling down in this area. This is the Forest Lane. So we've cited the facility on a 16.2 acre parcel. The parcel is actually owned by the town of Unionvale, but physically located in the town of Beekman, New York. What we proposed for the facility for access purposes is we have a 12-foot wide gravel access driveway, which is typical of any cell site. That gravel driveway is approximately 470 feet long, and that traverses from the Forest Lane into the wooded parcel that's currently vacant, and up to an area where we proposed a facility. The facility itself has a lease area of 70 by 75 feet, it's roughly 5,220 square feet, but the actual fenced area itself is 63 by 70, with the tower located in the middle. We designed this facility to accommodate public safety, and as I mentioned earlier, all four carriers. Right now Verizon is interested in going on a site with Homeland Towers. Verizon will be located within the fenced compound, and that fenced is roughly an eight-foot-high chain-link fence with privacy slats. Verizon will be placing their equipment at grade at the base of the tower, and that typically is on a 10-by-12 concrete pad. They have outdoor cabinets. There is a small backup generator, 15 KW generator, that's there to charge batteries in the event the site loses power. And currently, right now, we're proposing underground utilities. We propose underground for a number of reasons really, to harden the site. We've learned over the years that these sites are lifesavers. It's critical that when power goes down the area with aerials and telephone poles, if the utility is typically underground, it just hardens the site. So we are proposing to follow the existing or the proposed access drive to the compound itself, and that would be with NiSEG for the electric. We also are proposing some plantings around the facility itself. We're proposing 23 eight-foot-high Norwegian spruces to add some screening to the facility. And the facility itself is proposed at 150 feet, with Verizon having the top antenna center line of 146 feet. And what I mean by that is Verizon's antennas will be mounted at a center line of 146 feet. They're typically using eight-foot antennas, so the top of the antenna, the top of the tower itself, would be 150. There is no need to light this tower. We ran FAA, there's no issues with airports, there's no issues being over 199 feet when you typically have to light it, so it would be an unlit tower. It's an unmanned facility as well. Typically, maintenance folks, be it the carriers, go to sites like this once every four to five months to check on it. These days, they have what's called a network operating center, where they're able to dial in remotely and do diagnostics on the site itself. So that's really just a general overview of the site and location and what we're proposing here. We have submitted a number of materials to the town board, as well as to the town of Beekman, that are available, obviously, to the public to view. At this point, I'll certainly turn the microphone over to Robert Gaudioso. He can speak to those materials that we've submitted, he can speak a little more to the process here as well.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, Madam Supervisor and members of the board. Robert Gaudioso, the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder, on behalf of the applicant, Homeland Towers LLC. As Ray mentioned, we did submit a number of items in connection with this proposal. As you may recall, previously, the town board did pass a negative declaration with respect to the lease agreement, and did approve the lease agreement. This process is pursuant to case law known as the matter of Monroe balancing test, and that requires a separate secret process related to the review of the actual facility. So with that, we did submit a long environmental assessment form together with a visual EAF addendum. We submitted the full site plan, which we do have before you this evening. We also submitted a number of other important documents, although not necessarily required, we thought it provided very interesting and important information. That includes a radio frequency exposure report, which takes into account the full build-out of the tower with four carriers to confirm that the facility with respect to radio frequency exposure would be in compliance with the federal government regulations. And in fact, it would be 45 times below the federal limit, so it's well within the limits and a safe facility. We also submitted a structural report, showing that the facility would be designed and built in accordance with all the required structural requirements of New York State, including a specification to make sure in the unlikely event if the tower were to fall, it would remain on the 16.2 acre property. We submitted a full engineering report from Verizon Wireless, where they looked at it, and they looked at their surrounding sites, and they've shown that they have a need both to capacity, to off-road sites that they have in the area, but also provide coverage throughout this area. We submitted, what I think was very important, was a visual resource evaluation. We did a publicly noticed balloon test, I'm not sure if you all had the opportunity to see it, but we floated a balloon at the proposed height, we took photographs, we had our engineer draft a report, and most importantly, what we did is we prepared computer-generated renderings showing what the tower would look like at the locations where it would be visible. As Ray mentioned, the tower does not require FAA lighting, and we actually submitted an FAA report showing that the tower would not require that lighting. And finally, Ray submitted an affidavit which included a review of surrounding properties, where else we looked as far as alternatives. Many of the facility, many of the alternative properties had deed restrictions, whereas this parcel does not, and one of the other properties that was initially looked at was just not in the right location to service Verizon Wireless's needs. So with that, we think we've submitted a tremendous amount of information, but we'd be happy to answer any questions either the board or the public may have.
One question, could you just confirm that the main intention of this is to improve cell service in the area?
Absolutely. So as Ray mentioned, Verizon Wireless is proposed on these plans, and they'll improve both their 4G cell service, but we also designed the facility to avoid the proliferation of towers so that the other carriers can co-locate. So if you don't have Verizon service, we fully expect the other carriers will eventually co-locate. Important, on top of that, is we've reserved space on the tower and at the base for the town's emergency service providers, and that we think is a very important function.
In many fire districts, right?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Sheriff.
So how far up and down, or east and west, actually, up at 55, will the reach be from this tower?
It's pretty far. When you look at the maps, it depends on the frequency ranges. So Verizon uses generally two different frequency bands. One is the 700 megahertz frequency band, and that covers a tremendous area, and we have a map. I don't want to specifically say a distance, because it's based on the topography and the propagation of the antennas, and that covers a great area. But they also operate at 2,100 megahertz, and that covers a smaller area, but it has a much higher capacity. And the idea of that is that the surrounding sites are at or over capacity now. So once they're over capacity, then even if you had coverage, you wouldn't have service, because the surrounding sites wouldn't be able to handle that service, both in Beekman, Unionvale, and the surrounding areas. So the facility will cover actually both that wide area for coverage, but also relieve the capacity problems that are being experienced.
All right. Did you have a question? Does any? Nobody has a question? The visuals, the package that we received yesterday was really extensive, and I know they were, the same packages were delivered to the town of Beekman.
Correct.
And these visuals were very compelling, we're not going to go through those tonight, I suppose, because it's, they're not really large enough for a room.
Yeah, I think everyone needs an opportunity to take a good hard look at them, even though we, you know, we did have the publicly noticed balloon test.
So we can leave them, let people look at them and see some of your simulations and the views from all around town, there were like 30 different locations, it seems like.
Yeah, we tried to blanket the area, we tried to really be, you know, over-inclusive.
Yeah, because it was hard to see that balloon unless you really made an effort.
Well, the other thing too is the balloon is bright orange, but the facility itself, we propose it's galvanized finish, because it'll patina and it'll blend into the background. Some people say painted or other things like that.
You see that balloon.
So what we did is we did propose the monopole style rather than a much larger lattice tower, which has the thinner profile.
Great, well, we'll make these available and everybody can look at it, because it's very interesting. Do you have a question? Yes?
Yes, I have several. Sir, where are you from? Where are you located? Your name is Snyder, Snyder, are you a lawyer?
I'm a lawyer, correct, with the law office of Snyder &amp; Snyder.
Okay, where is the question?
My office is in Tarrytown.
In Tarrytown?
Correct.
You came from Tarrytown, I'm curious.
No, actually, I came from my home, which is probably about 30 minutes north of Tarrytown.
Has there been any public hearings on this particular?
We're having that tonight.
This is tonight? This is the first public hearing that you've had on this site? It sounds like they're all ready to go ahead and do all this, they have all the names.
Do you have another question for him? Because we haven't gotten to our, do you want to ask him a question?
No, I was, go ahead.
A comment? Okay, question?
I have a question. So I got the FOIL.
Could you do me a favor? I was just reminded that when you stand up to speak, you're supposed to say your name in the Forest Lane again. Thank you.
Sixteen Forest Lane. So part of the papers I got from the FOIL request I put in, the act, the tower parcel is parcel number ending in 016862, which is a 22.2 acre parcel in the park. And then the access parcel onto Forest would be parcel 960870, and then all of a sudden, that 22 acre parcel is off the table, and we're just talking about 43 to Forest. So I guess my question is, why is this tower not going deeper into the forest where it was intended, according to this? And now it's within, you know, under 500 feet from people's homes.
Yeah, we looked at the other parcel, and there were deed restrictions on the other parcel, whereas this parcel, there was not.
But they're all part of the deeded land from Gina, Jean Connor, who, I mean, she deeded like 200 acres.
Yeah, they have different, they have different restrictions and deeds related to each of the parcels.
So that's not clear for me?
That's because that's my email. And we'd already had a conversation about it in public, in person, so that's why, you're only getting an email, so you're not getting the full story. Yes?
Good evening, Carol, you and 89 May Fair Road, Beekman. Two questions for you. You say 150 feet is the top height this tower will be. I know that the one, the Homeland Tower that went in in the town of Beekman, just near three miles down the road, had, there was discussion about adding 25 feet onto that at some point? Is that something that can happen on this tower as well?
We're not proposing that, but if the board or the public wanted us to build it to be able to handle an extension, it could be. I believe, I believe that tower was lower than this tower as far as the height, if I recall.
Maybe 125.
I believe so.
Maybe adding 25.
I think that's right.
So there is potential that this tower could end up being over 150?
Well, we're proposing at 150 feet, because we believe that satisfies Verizon and the other carriers.
However, down the road, as you said, if it's deemed necessary by the town, the tower could be increased in height?
Yeah, we don't have any plans for that, so I would be speculating if I said that, but usually, from a good planning perspective, it's better to extend a tower than build a second tower.
Okay. And my second question is, is this tower supposed to be for 4G or 5G?
So this tower is proposed to remedy a 4G gap.
Okay.
What 5G will ultimately be, it's hard to say, but whether it's, whether it's towers or small cells or anything like that, they'll all have the capability, obviously, to be able to accept 5G service if and when it does roll out.
Okay, and I guess my last question for you, sir, is, three miles down the road, there is a Homeland Tower, which the residents of Beekman were made very clear that that was going to solve and ameliorate all the problem through here. I live in the middle of this new potential tower and the existing tower, which means I would be roughly a mile and a half in between two towers. That really concerns me. So I'm just unclear why this tower is, why that other tower did not solve the problem.
So I think that when you look at the reports from both of the sites, from Verizon Wireless, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, that the sites are limited in distance based on the low power that they use, the frequency bands they use, and most importantly, the topography. So they cover different areas. Three miles apart for a 4G cell tower is actually quite a distance, even at a mile and a half radius between the two. So when you look at, when you look at the maps, they're all part of the record with the town clerk, you'll see particularly at the 2,100 megahertz band, they simply don't cover as far as, as far as three miles.
Okay, thank you.
Another question? Yes?
Town Landworthy, 19 Washburn Road, Pope Quay, New York. Several properties you said were also looked at, but rejected for deed restrictions. Now, like deed restrictions can be difficult, they are not necessarily insurmountable, particularly if you have a company with Verizon's resources behind it. Can you elaborate on the specifics of why none of these other properties could have been seriously looked at to modify the deed restrictions?
Well, I think that's a good question. Deed restrictions are very difficult to list, lift, and depending on the type of deed restriction, it usually requires some type of court case unless there is a, unless there's one person that holds the rights to that deed restriction, which is rare. And a court case to lift a deed restriction is a very long tedious process that's not always successful. But more importantly, the use of municipal property is actually one of the preferred locations in the code. It's actually the third priority after using an existing tower, which we've shown there are no existing towers in this area, or clustering towers at the same site, and we showed that's not available either. So the third highest priority is using municipal property. Municipal property is also very useful, because it provides a benefit to the municipality, including being able to be the landlord of the site, to make sure everything is maintained, to make sure the lease agreement is to the town's specifications, to make sure that the facility itself is, as this one is, being built, not only the tower, but the ground equipment area for the town's emergency services, to be able to provide that additional benefit. So town-owned property does have advantages certainly over private property that has a deed restriction.
You may have a follow-up?
Sure.
You mentioned the emergency services. This situation, I think you can appreciate, represents quite a nunder, because it's a municipal property for you. represents quite a tenunder because it's a municipal property for Uniondale. And you've mentioned specifically that it's going to benefit Uniondale's emergency responders, which is excellent. I'm all for supporting emergency responders. But it lays in the town of Beakman, who has almost no leverage or say over whether this is going to happen. Is it going to benefit our emergency service providers?
So as far as no say, that part I would disagree with. That's the, that's the purpose of this hearing. That's what this board is balancing. Obviously, the secret notice was sent out. There's, there's an open process for secret. But we're happy to engage both with the town of Unionvale and the town of Beakman to see if there is a need to be able to co-locate emergency service providers on the tower for both towns, and we're happy to be able to accommodate that.
Thank you.
And Ray has something to answer that?
Yeah, I'll expand on that. We had, I've reached out recently as well to JD with the Beakman Fire Department and offered site plans. JD, I don't know his last name. I work with JD.
Do I know?
JD Thompson. He's the Chief Administrative Assistant for the Beakman Fire District.
Thank you, Peter. So JD is aware of the proposed facility. We've offered it to Fire Police, CMS, obviously. We try to be a good corporate neighbor and allow local public safety on these facilities at no charge. So we have reached out to the Beakman folks.
Peter, do you have a question?
No, I just want to add to what Gary was saying. I'm a commissioner in the fire district for Beakman, also an active firefighter. What I have observed is that more and more emergency service personnel, firefighters and chiefs are using cell phones. And they're using cell phones more for communications now than actually they're using the radio frequencies. Radio frequencies are for the trust, but a lot, awful lot of communications goes on a lot through cells.
Is there no question? I'm sorry.
Adrian Rourke, 2193 Beakman. So I'm the closest house to that. So a couple of things, just 4G and 5G. Well, what's the difference? Would this upgrade increase radio frequency or are there other concerns like that that have to be aware of?
Sure. So the difference with 4G and 5G is 4G is the service that is commonly being used now. It's the LTE service. That's generally 4G, and all the carriers are using that type of technology. 5G is the next technology coming. What it will ultimately be is, is open to somewhat of speculation. What we do know is that it'll have much wider bandwidth and it'll have much quicker speeds. So it'll be useful for machine-to-machine communications, telemedicine, driverless cars, all the different uses that we see of the future. That's the speculation for 5G. As far as radio frequency exposure or, or the frequencies that you mentioned, no, it is safe. We submitted a report from a third-party vendor. What's happened is the FCC has established guidelines. These types of facilities must meet those guidelines. Local jurisdictions are not allowed to regulate based on those guidelines as long as the facility meets them. And this particular facility, even with all four carriers, would be 45 times below those guidelines. So it will be a safe facility.
Yes?
Dr. Bianco, 45 Skyline Drive, with Rancho, Beakman. I'm curious to know what studies have been done to look at, look at potential properties outside of this specific area? I understand that this is being built on a deeded property, but that surely is not the only property this can be built on in this vast area that stands outside the deeded area?
Well, we look, we look for a number of things. We look for a property that is clean from a, from a deeding, you know, a deeding situation. We look for a facility and a piece of property where we can cite the facility. That's usually a larger piece of property, so we, we have plenty of setback area. In this case, we have a 16.2 acre property. We look for a property that we could actually lease, which we were able to lease in this case, from the town of Unionvale. We look for a property that we could actually construct. So some properties are very difficult to construct because of steep slopes or wetlands. In this case, this property has wetlands on it, but not where we're proposing to go. So we're over 123 feet from the closest wetland, so there are no wetland permits that are required because it's a 100-foot buffer. So we're outside of that to the closest wetland. We look at areas, most importantly, that'll satisfy the need of the carriers. And in this case, based on the Verizon Wireless report and their acceptance of this site, we know that it works for Verizon Wireless and therefore the other carriers. So those are the, those are the qualifications that we, that we must have and that we've already gone through in this particular case.
If I get that, I've built dozens and dozens of buildings in New York City. I can't say how many times across the state, New Jersey, and beyond. But my question remains, what other areas could have met the test? And how was that counterbalance worth the impact to residents? I don't know of any cases where building a tower like this has increased property values. Rarely does it even stabilize them. Often it destroys them or certainly undermines them.
Yeah.
And that doesn't mean this will happen yet.
Sure.
I'm simply suggesting there's a balance here. And notice, I don't think anyone's saying that there isn't any need for a tower, but the question is whether you put it. And I don't think anyone's saying not in my yard, but even a few hundred feet in any direction can help some people who are most impacted. So again, I ask, what kind of balance was made to make sure it gets out of the areas and have the least impact on those most affected?
Well, I think we've done that. And you, and you talk about some of the issues, and I think it's very.
The map shows it's in the woods.
I think, I think as Ray pointed out, we have the deed restrictions here. We have the wetlands here and the wetlands up here, so we're outside of the two wetland buffers. We're coming in with an access drive here and pushing it back towards the other undeveloped property. So as far as the layout on the, on the 16.2 acre property, I think we've done exactly that. And as far as other alternative sites, we did do a thorough analysis, which is in Ray's report. That's as part of the record.
It doesn't feel like it. It feels like it's way convenient because it's.
So can I make a suggestion here? I'm sorry, just in case. We're going to get to questions, then we're going to close the meeting, and we're going to have, we're going to have a public hearing, and then you can make your commentary. So if you're, if you have, if you've got something on your mind, which clearly you do, you just, if you give us a couple of minutes, we'll get there, and you can come up and talk for three minutes, okay? All right. Is there another question?
Just a follow-up.
You have a question?
Sure.
Yeah. Could you state your name and your address, please?
Paul Lachry Wallace and Wallace, 856th, et cetera, et cetera, at Beakman. I just have a follow-up question to that gentleman's question. What other non-part land properties were considered? Can you discuss those? I don't have a copy of the report in reference, but are they included in that report?
Sure, they are included in that report. One of the properties was not suitable from an RF standpoint. It was too far out of the area. The other properties that we looked at were deed restricted. So that's all in Ray's report. We're happy to send you a copy if you don't have it. I know we did provide a copy yesterday to both the Town Board and the Planning Board in Beakman.
Okay, so there was three other properties?
No, no, there was more than that. Actually, there were seven other parcels. But again, the municipal, the municipal property is one of the higher priorities.
Is there another question? I'm sorry.
So I know that this property, that this building stands on, had deed restrictions, that there was a lawsuit in 1994, 1995 to lift them so that they could build this town building here. So why can't we not put the tower here where it's already been deregulated? It's municipal property. It's away from residents. It's away from the Beakman residents who are most directly impacted by this. It's Unionville's property.
There was never a lawsuit about this?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the lawsuits. I'm really not able to speak to that. I'm not familiar with those issues.
I was mentioning before, there was a lawsuit from Jane Doe and John Doe to relinquish the restrictions on this parcel so that they could build this building because the deed was restricted.
Yeah, I'm just going to be honest, I can't answer the question because I'm not familiar with that lawsuit or those deed restrictions. So I'm just, I don't want to give you an answer. I don't know the answer without reviewing those documents.
Well, the second half of the question is why not build it here?
Yeah, like I said, I don't know the particular deed restrictions on this property, but I know the location that was picked was primarily driven by the RF need at the location where it is.
Thanks, Dave.
I have a question.
Okay, yes.
I have a question. I live in 22 DeForest Lane. Now, we noticed the balloon on our road as you were putting up, especially because it was the winter time and there's no foliage to cover it. This balloon was at least 30 feet above the tree level, so we could see it, just the balloon. So we didn't even know what it was. So we called the police to investigate what it was because when we walk our dogs through there, you know, our kids go in there, and we seen this canister with a balloon on it. But my point is, is that we see it. We're going to see it. If we ever decide our property, we set our property, the potential buyers are going to see it. So it's only going to affect how we sell our houses in the future because there's a cell tower within 1,000 feet of our house.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
I think it's a good time to ask this gentleman a question. Feel free.
So what we're doing is, what we're just trying to concern is, is why did you build it so close to our house? Why did you, and are you going to try to disguise it, you know, like they did on the Hudson River Parkway, where they made it look like trees to hide the tower so that it's not an eyesore sticking up out of our tree line? So those are my two questions. Are we going to try to disguise it, or are we going to have this big piece of that with all these flaps and panels all the way around it? And why is it so close to the residents of DeForest Lane?
So I think the, I think the question before about where it's located on the property, I think I touched on. As far as.
You pointed about this side of the property.
On this side here.
Yeah, you pointed out that you were up to COVID or whatever on that side. But on this side of the property is where all the houses are, where all the residents are.
Which is why I said that the design was to push it back towards the back of the property.
So we're going to go back further away from our house?
Well, is fall back on, on this property, back in this direction?
Again, how far is that tower from my house?
Which one's your house, if you can just point to it?
We are right here.
You are?
Where's it? Right here.
Okay. So just by way of example, I believe this house here is 500, so I would have to scale it, but I would suspect somewhere around 1,000-foot range?
So we're over 1,000 feet away from the tower?
Yeah, whether I'm under or over, I would have to specifically scale that house.
Are you going to walk the street from us or even closer?
Sure, I think the closest home is over 500 feet.
And is that disaster approved by the FDA?
There is, there is no, there is no setback required by the FCC. Correct. By the FCC, correct.
The state that requires that the tower can be built within a certain distance?
On RF, correct. There is no distance.
Is there another, is there another question? Yes?
With, to take off my earpiece question, I'll just raise it to my curiosity in my mind, is, I'm, I'm on the house right there in the corner. It looks like it's closer to either one of those two houses that you mentioned. So how close is it to mine? It's right there.
Yeah, the closest one, I believe, is 506 feet, if I recall from the plans. But I believe it's this house. I would have to flip. If you gave me a moment, I would have to flip.
Just take it off the clips, I think.
Yeah, I just wanted to find the right page.
When I saw the sign today, when I came up my road, I mean, it was right there, and it was right on my.
Yeah, so I believe, so this one here is 500. This one here is 506, from here to there. I believe it's 506 from here to here.
And that's the sign?
Correct.
Are there any other questions? You have a question?
Just one follow-up, I'm sorry. So there was a question before with regard to whether or not the height of the tower is going to be increased. And I know that you indicated that Homeland Tower didn't have any intention of increasing the tower at this point. However, and I'm not so familiar with FCC regulations, but is there a regulation that would, as a matter of right, allow cell towers to increase that tower height? And to what height could they increase it to?
So anything would require Town Board approval because we have at least 450-foot tower. So that's, I think, the simplest.
There is no automatic right pursuant to an FCC regulation that would entitle the owner of the tower to increase that tower? Say another carrier wants to come on and there's no room, and nobody is going to increase it. Is there an automatic right for the tower to be increased pursuant to an FCC regulation?
So there are FCC regulations from a regulatory standpoint, but not from a leasing standpoint, that allows certain eligible facility requests to be approved with proof to the municipality that certain criteria were met. One of those criterias is no more than 20 feet in height. But as I mentioned before, in this case, one of the unique benefits of the town owning the property and being the landlord, the town has a, has a governmental and proprietary interest, even though that's not the test. But they, they control it also as the landlord, and our lease is for 150 feet.
Okay, so, so I guess what your answer is, is that there is a right through FCC regulations to add an additional 20 feet onto the tower, but what you're all seeing is a provision in the lease that you have with the town of Unionville that would prohibit that increase?
Well, there's no, there's no, there's no prohibition on it, but it's, what we have approved in the lease is a 150-foot tower.
But the lease does not approve a, so there's no prohibition contained in the lease that would not allow you to increase the tower by 20 feet?
Yeah, but that would be, it would be beyond the scope of the lease. The lease, the lease allows for 150-foot towers. So to amend that, we would need approval from the Town Board to amend the lease.
If an extension were proposed, am I correct in assuming that we'd have to go through the same procedure again?
Sure.
To get that extension?
Sure. So we'd have to go through a few procedures. We'd have to go through a secret procedure. We'd have to go through a leasing procedure, permissive referendum procedure.
A hearing?
You know, a public hearing on.
Can we check with FAA again?
We would check with FAA again. I mean, this, this is not something that we could just go out and put a 20-foot extension on.
And I'm sorry, that procedure would be based on an application to increase, to amend the lease?
Well, we would have to do a number of things. We would have to amend the lease. We'd have to go through a secret process to amend the lease. We'd have to actually amend the lease. We'd have to do the permissive referendum notice. We'd have to go through our NEPA requirements on the federal level. We'd have to go through our secret requirements. We'd have to obtain any necessary building permits, which means we'd have to submit the structural reports. We'd have to confirm that the emissions guidelines were still met. We'd have to confirm that the FAA would not require any lighting on it. So essentially the same, or similar process.
Okay, so I guess what you're saying is that there's no, there is, the FCC doesn't allow a increase of, say, 20 feet onto a tower as a matter of right to the utility? It would be the same process if you were constructing a new tower?
In, in this particular case, because it's on municipal property, so we have to go through that municipal leasing process, which in turn requires, the leasing process itself requires a secret process, whereas a, a personal landlord would not necessarily require that type of rigorous process, whereas a municipal property would.
Okay, is there another question? Do you have any question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm understanding from what you just said that it's more restrictive to put a tower on municipal property than it is on public property?
That's, it's actually, it's funny you say that because we say it all the time. People say you go to municipal property because it's easier. It's not. We have to go through two secret processes. We have to go through a public hearing process, you know, a hearing process for the lease. We have to post a permissive referendum notice. We're subject to all different types of requirements because you're a municipality with respect to things like assignment and, and other things of that nature. So it's, it's a much more laborious and difficult process to go on municipal property.
You had a question, didn't you? And would you, I forgot to, did you state your name and your address this time? Sorry.
Janet Townsend, 28th DeForest Lane. I haven't heard any conversation on the, the effects of the health, the effects of the tower and the radiation rays and stuff, the effects on health.
Sure. So.
You know, I'm always hearing that, you know, radiation, the cell phone, this and that is always having these negative effects on, you know, on your health, you know, leading to cancer, brain functioning, depreciation, and a lot of these other health issues. I guess I would, but the question, has there been any thought and consideration into the health effects of those that are raised there so close to this place?
Absolutely. So I was speaking to that before, and I was using different terms. But what essentially happened in 1996, when Congress passed the Telecommunications Act, it required that the FCC create regulations regarding radio frequency exposure, which is the health issue. And what the FCC did is it took the consensus of the scientific community of what a safe exposure level would be. It built in a factor of 50 times to lower the standard. It built in a factor of 50 times to lower the standard that the scientific community said would be safe. So it made the standard 50 times more stringent. What we did is then we did a report based not only on Verizon, but all the carriers operating maximum power 24/7, worst-case scenario, and the facility would be 45 times below even that standard that has the 50 times safety factor built into it by the FCC. And in fact, what Congress said, what the federal law says, is that municipalities may not regulate on that basis, so you couldn't make a decision on the siting of one of these facilities on that basis, if it meets the federal regulations. And as I just mentioned, it's 45 times below the federal regulations.
That is particularly-
Correct.
Sir?
Sarah Jaloff, 17 to Forest Lane. Is that based upon 4G or 5G?
That's based on the frequency bands and the technology that's being proposed, which is 4G.
Yeah.
But there's no, there's no 5G proposed at this time. And if we were to ever make any changes, we would still have to meet the FCC requirements.
Does she have a question?
Yeah, I do. Sharon Wilkes, six Rose Street. You said-
What was she, address?
Six Rose Street. Actually, I own property right across the street from this one. You said this needs, this proposal meets the town's specifications. What town?
So I'm not, when you said, when I said, so the town of, so the town of Beekman, when I, I think the plot that I was referencing, town of Beekman has a priority list for the siting of facilities. The number one priority is co-location on an existing tower, which doesn't exist. Second priority is, is clustering of towers in one location. And because there's no towers that exist, clustering is not possible. And the third priority is use of municipal land.
Are there any other questions?
Number one, 16 to Forest Lane. Is not the fifth priority in the town of Beekman to conserve property values?
Well, that's a, that's a different thing. So I'm talking about the priority list of which properties to use.
So what reparations are going to be made to homeowners whose house values plummet when this thing goes up?
Well, I think we're making the assumption that house values will plummet. We've seen numerous reports where they, they actually do a paired sales analysis, where they look at facilities with a view and without a view of a cell tower, and there's no diminution in property values. So that's, that's the reports that I've seen from the, from the appraisers.
The reports I've seen are they drop, have home values anywhere from two to 21%. And 21% of my house is over $60,000.
Yeah, I've never seen a report that, that was credible that said something like that.
Does anybody else have a question? Yes.
You said that you moved those, that should not, sorry. Stand up, Janu. You can move the siting. Was the balloon trial test at the new location or the old location?
No, the new location. And in fact, when, when you look at our report, we have the photographs of the balloon, and then we render in the tower to show exactly where it would be.
Did it-
Go ahead.
I'm a little confused procedurally.
You can, feel free to ask a question.
Is, I thought one of the issues before the board has to do with this issue of immunity from regulations. And I, I would like to just ask if that could be explained. Like what regulations are they seeking, or you seeking, or whoever seek to be immune from?
Sure. So in 1988, the New York Court of Appeals, which is the highest court in New York, looked at a case known as the Matter of Monroe case. And it was a county proposing an airport within the city of Rochester. And the court said that where you have two different sovereign entities, two different districts, two different towns, two different villages, two different entities that have been created by New York law, that whether one entity should be restricted by the other entity's zoning requirements should be based on a balancing test. And what the Court of Appeals did is it laid out nine factors, none of which are controlling, but that should be balanced by the board. And that's the request that we've made to the Unionvale Town Board to determine whether they believe the facility should be exempt from the Beekman regulations. The nine factors include things such as the nature and scope of the municipality or the instrumentality seeking the immunity. In this case, it's the Town Board. They're created by New York state law. The encroaching governmental entities legislative grant of authority. So again, that would be the Town Board in this case. Their grant of authority comes directly from New York State to be able to lease property, to be able to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents. In this case, by way of the provision of wireless service. The kind or function of land involved. In this case, again, it's, it's a proposed wireless telecommunications facility, which in New York State has been deemed a public utility. And under federal law, also has certain protections where a municipality cannot prohibit this type of service. The effect a local land use regulation would have upon the proposal. And in this case, the land use regulation, while the facility meets many of the requirements, including that priority list, we believe, the height requirement, things of that nature, because it's not a permitted use in this particular district, the process in Beekman would not allow for this. So that's another important reason why the balancing test should be conducted. Alternative locations, that would be in a less restrictive zoning area. And again, I think I've touched on that regarding Ray's report, some of the alternative that were looked at. The impact of the legitimate local interests. Again, this is going through a full CECL and balancing test process. And I think the purpose of this meeting, and I suspect future meetings, will be to take public comment and to be able to take into consideration all of those interests. Alternative methods of providing the proposed improvement. Again, we've talked about the design of the facility, the availability of co-location, so there's not multiple towers. The extent of the public interest to be served. Again, we've talked about the wireless service, the emergency communications, as I think was mentioned quite aptly, the fact that emergency service providers now are using wireless service. AT&amp;T uses FirstNet. They provide broadband service to all entities that get onto their service. Verizon Wireless has a similar type of service. Even just regular emergency service providers use their cell phone and their typical service. And finally, the intergovernmental participation. And in this case, there is, there is a CECL review. Beekman's been notified of that. They have the opportunity to comment. Councils hear from Beekman. So these are the nine factors that ultimately the board has to decide, based on all of the documents and comments that are in front of them. But that's essentially the answer to the, to the question of the legal, the legal process.
Just, if I could ask, are you familiar with the setback and other requirements of the town of Unionville for cell phones?
Yes.
And does this meet those requirements?
In many cases, it does. The setback for the houses, I believe, is 500 feet, which this meets.
Are there any that doesn't meet?
Not off the top of my head. I would have to, I would have to study it. The purpose really, though, is to look at whether this particular facility should be exempt from the zoning regulations, not just any particular zoning regulation. But we did try to design the facility to meet the height limit, which I believe is the same in both towns.
And my concern is that if you're, if it were not the happenstance of this being Beekman, but we're all in Unionville, would you be subject to regulations of Unionville?
No, Unionville could perform the same balancing test if it's on their property and determine that their own regulations do not apply.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's, it's the circumstance that it's on municipal property.
Anytime something is on municipal property, this balancing test comes into play?
Anytime something is on municipal property, the board has the opportunity to apply the balancing test.
Similar to our solar development on 55. Are there any other questions? If there aren't any other questions, I think people have a lot to say, and I'd like to be able to get into the public hearing and give people that opportunity. Do we have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All right, all in favor of closing the meeting?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The meeting is now officially closed. I'd like to open the public hearing. And first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody by coming tonight. We appreciate you coming. Everybody on this Town Board is very, very interested in what you have to say. We have a list of people that have signed up. I'm going to call the names of people to speak and make a commentary into that microphone. You need to use the microphone because everything's being filmed, and that way people at home that will watch this later can hear you. So that's why we ask for the microphone, if you don't mind coming up. I'd also like to take a minute to introduce our Town Board. On the end, we have Councilman Steve Frazier, Councilwoman Karina Kelly, Councilman John Welsh, supervisor Betsy Moss, Councilman David McMorris. This is our Town Attorney, Jeff Battistoni, from Vanderwater and Vanderwater and Poughkeepsie. Okay? And again, we all are very interested to hear what you have to say.
My pardon?
Andrew.
Oh, Andrea, you came back. I was like, Andrea Chase, the Town Clerk? She was over there. Sorry, Andrea. She's also very interested, and she's going to be taking all the notes that you can read later. I wanted to make sure everybody knew that we passed a resolution authorizing this public hearing, and we have an affidavit of publication on official, on official notice. It's in the Town Clerk's office. If anybody wants to see any of these documents, any of this stuff can be available to you at any time. Now, the rules of the procedure, because we all want to be friends. We're going to keep order. We want to give everybody a chance to speak, but the way we'd like to do that is to give everybody three minutes. Anybody who has signed up, we're not going to exclude you. If you haven't signed up, feel free to come and sign up, and we'll call you in order. So you're not being excluded. For example, Mr. Ackerman, I don't believe you've signed up, so I'll hit you at the bottom.
No, I'm in there.
There you are. I don't see you. Oh, we'll get you. Okay, great. You're not at the top.
You can put me at the bottom.
All right. Or at the top, then we can hear what you have to say. So what we're going to do is we're going to have everybody speak for three minutes. And this kind gentleman to my right is going to give you a 20-second warning. I don't know if you've ever taken a Dale Carnegie class, but it works beautifully. He's going to gently say 20 seconds, and that way you'll know you'll have 20 seconds to wrap it up. And that way, we can get everybody in and not, not exclude anybody and, and not be here till midnight, not that we wouldn't stay. The other thing is, nobody can cede their time to anybody else. You have three minutes, and that would be it. Extra time can be given if the board considers it necessary. So if you, for example, want to, you know, get up and make some commentary, Ray Vergatti or maybe Mr. Ackerman, then we can certainly give you extra time if it's necessary. We ask that everybody make your comments to the board. This is a board hearing. We want to hear what you have to say. We're going to be deliberating after we hear what you say, so please speak to us. It's not audience participation. We also want you to know that written comments will be accepted after we adjourn this evening. So if something comes to you later on that you hear somebody else say, and you'd like to write us so that we could consider it, please feel free to do so, because all of those comments will be taken into consideration as well. Now, I think what we should do is go ahead if we'd like to begin. There aren't as many people as we expected, but there are 13 names. The first one being Tara Longworthy. Would you please come on up, Tara?
Hi, good evening. Again, I'm Tara Longworthy. I'm from 19 Washburn Road, Polquay, New York, a hamlet of the town of Beekman. I have several concerns, a laundry list, but it's three minutes, and I'm going to speak to the one that bothers me the most. The regulations and the law that allows this utility in these municipalities to disregard health issues, disregard property value issues, even though this tower is at 45% or 45 whatever that standard is, less than what the FCC allows, is a 23-year-old statute. And there was a time when people thought two vodkas at lunch was healthy for you. There was a time when chewing tobacco was not considered a health risk. There was a time when many things we now know are not good for us, dumping waste into our wetlands, have been determined to be good for us. And I think before any more cell towers are built anywhere in Dutchess County, let alone on a town of Beekman piece of property owned by the town of Unionville, we need to lobby hard our federal representatives and put a halt to this until we really genuinely know. Because technology is moving faster than research. And this is a 5G capable. 4G came out, what, three years ago, four years ago? And now we're going up another level. So I encourage all of you to call your Congressman Antonio Delgado. You at home, too, please, at 202-225-5614, and ask him to address this immediately, because we could find out that our young children in this town are going to be dying young because of this, because we moved too fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Ewan?
Statistic. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. 89 Mayfair Road, Polquay. Tara stole some of my thunder, but that's fine.
That's all right.
That's fine. I, I want to just add that I really think this is, requires a ton more due diligence than we are giving it. This is Philip Morris all over again. We have no clue what we're dealing with. I shouldn't say that, because if you look at peer-reviewed studies, and they are out there, it is clear we should be scared for our pets, our children, our parents, our community at large, the environment. Recently, 240 scientists and doctors from 41 nations, all with peer-reviewed research, appealed to the UN for a moratorium on 5G rollout, citing serious impacts to human health and the environment. Nothing has happened. In April of 2019, a school in California where a cell tower was put in, kids and faculty suddenly were contracting cancer. It was a Sprint Tower. They shut the tower down. The cancer rates rose. Sprint had to remove the tower. There is plenty of evidence out there that this is a scary phenomenon that we are dealing with. And really, when we are saying that we are more concerned about a cell phone dropped call than human life, I, I have a real issue with that. So I just, I really hope that you will not see this as a one-time deal, this public hearing. I really, I, I just think you really need to go and do your individual due diligence. There's enough information out there that you can form, you can make a good informed decision on this issue, because you're scaring the residents. The residents are already scared in Beekman, because we already have a tower. And these two are so close together, so I just implore you to really consider this carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I live at, I'm Gina LaMonica. I live at 16 to Forest Lane, directly impacted by this tower. This thing is going to be a blight on the aesthetics of our neighborhood. It's hideous. I don't want it built. The Monroe, Matter Monroe says there's supposed to be no detriment to adjoining landowners. This is detrimental to our property values. I don't care what this gentleman says. I've done my research. It happens. And also, Dutchess County is a member of the Hudson Valley, River Valley Greenway Plan, which is a voluntary regional strategy for preserving scenic, natural, historic, cultural, recreational resources while encouraging compatible economic development. This is not compatible. The restrictions on time or forest protect this land. There is two endangered species in this forest. One is the Indiana bat, who is roosting right now, so you really can't cut down trees right now. The DEC is in place to protect them. And then there's the blending turtles that are threatened. This, this tower is not in keeping with the spirit of the deeded land from Gene Connor. I think this is, this is a shame what's happening to our neighborhood. We're all in a constant state of anxiety, the people who live at Forest Lane. I think they all agree with me. I have neighbors that want to sell their house because of this tower. And they're not going to be able to, because nobody's going to buy it. 96% of home buyers turn away from homes near cell towers, because they can buy homes that are not near cell towers. So you need to put this thing either deeper in the forest or right here, where it's going to affect you all, and not in our neighborhood, and not affecting our property values. The other, last thing I would like to say is please keep this public hearing open. It should not be closed, because I have a stack of papers that I got today that's about six inches high, that I need to go through, and my, my co-residents on my street and in the area need to go through it. We feel very ambushed by this and betrayed by our own Town Board, or Planning Board, I should say. I, I challenge that you guys have lead agency. You stand to financially benefit from this. And, and that's only going to go up, because the more people on the tower, the more services on the towers, your rent's going to go up. Just increase your cost of your programs. This, this, we don't, I don't drop calls. I live on to Forest Lane. I don't drop calls. I don't drop calls. But in fact, the power goes out at least once a week. So be prepared for the generator problems. And that's loud. I have a 5,000-watt generator, 15,000 watt. My neighbors know when I turn my generator on. So the power goes out at least once or twice a week. We can all attest to that.
I'm going to have trouble pronouncing this. Is it A-G-E Dusha?
Yes.
Would you like to come up and correct my pronunciation, please?
I don't know what to say because they're all the same, all the same hate.
So just take them. Oh, the comments?
Angry or because they're going to kill our kids, animals, the houses, the value. I don't know what they do this year because maybe the money, somebody.
Come on up. Because you are, you are talking.
I have a dog now.
No, no, no. We need you to please come up to the microphone. The microphone will not amplify your voice for us, so we hear you. But back there, we are recording it for everyone, Beekman, us, everyone to be able to see this. The public hearing is open for another two weeks, so people may want to know what still may want to be concerned with other things that haven't been addressed.
My name is H. Dushai. I live 21755. It's not too far from the towers going to build. The value of the house is going to go down. I'm worried about the health. I'm worried about the kids because kids in park, they're going to come and play. We're not going to live just for the tower, for the, all the park. So I'm very concerned for the health and for the, all our neighbors. They should put it someplace a little farther than people's houses. There are plenty of land. Why to put it next to the people's house, 500 feet? The 500 feet is next door. I don't know. I'm so angry. I'm so, I don't know what to say, but I hope whoever is in charge, maybe it's the money, the, I don't know, who does it or what's going on. But look and take it very serious, this thing, because this is not a joke. This is people's life and health. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Amory Bernhardt?
Thank you, Amory Bernhardt, 2193 Route 55. So I'm not really going to, you know, argue against. I know there's been some research out there. I think one of the key things said tonight was technology is moving faster than our research. And I think that's something we really need to grasp. A long time ago, my father told me a story. He said, I grew up there and I bought the house from my father. And he got it back in 69. He said, when he moved in, he actually approached Mr. Connors about purchasing the land. And I said, I don't want anybody to build around me. I like living in the woods. And Mr. Connors says, don't worry, no one will ever build around you. Little did he know that he was donating the property to the town and it became a park. So it's disheartening now that a commercial cell tower is going in, just for myself, just to think about what I'm, you know, my kids are growing up there where I grew up. They're playing in the forest that I grew up in. I'm the closest one to this tower. And I would just ask you, you put yourself in my shoes. I have children. I have four children. We sleep, we're sleeping underneath this potential tower. And you can give me research and you could say, oh, the study's up to this point where they haven't seen, and you brought up tobacco, you brought up smoking, you brought up things and people said, oh, this is fine. And then 10 years from now, is it going to be somebody standing over my son in the hospital saying, sorry? Sorry, we didn't know. We didn't know because we didn't do enough research for this advanced technology. And to say all of a sudden this tower is not going to go up higher, once you break ground and you have a tower there, what's to stop you? What's to stop you from adding 5G to it, 6G, 10G, whatever it may be? There's nothing going to stop that. We're naive. If we wouldn't stop the initial build, we're not going to stop that growth. And we're never going to keep up with the research either. So I would just ask, slow down. Slow down, take a look at this. And again, put yourself in my shoes. Would you want a tower 500 feet from where your kids sleep? Day in and day out repeatedly, hours and hours of exposure. It's not like I'm driving by on the side of the road. That's just what I, thank you.
Eric? Eric, I apologize. What's your last name?
Gallo.
Gallo, okay. Come on up there. Thank you.
My name is Eric Gallo. I live at 17 DeForest Lane. I was just sitting in the back thinking to myself, the day that we drove up to 17 DeForest Lane, it was just a little cabin. And my wife looked at me and she said, I can live here for the rest of my life. And I said, huh. So I built a 2,000-square-foot addition on the little cabin that was there. We had one child at the time who was not even a year old. And now I have three, 14 years later. I'm still impacted. I'm not 500 feet away, 1,500, 2,000 feet away. Same type of deal. I think technology, at 4G it sounds good, 5, 6G, we don't know where this is going to go. My wife is to the point now where we are very stressed out and we're probably going to sell the house. We don't, we can't live like this. I can't, I can't do this. It's not about me or my wife. It's about my three kids and what's going to happen five, 10 years down the road. I'm not going to, I'm not going to take that chance with my kids' lives. I don't know what the impact is and I would like them to know more about it, but right now we're in a bad situation. I work for ours in school district. I'm a contractor. Work 16 hours a day trying to hold on to the one dream I have, and this is going to happen. You know, so I want you guys to take that into consideration. Maybe just slow down and see what the effects are. We like it there because we are in the woods. It is pristine. And now, you know, we're looking at it. The balloon was right there, so we're going to see the tower. Whether you disguise it or not, it's still going to be in the back of our heads what the effects are of our family, on our family. Thank you.
Let me see. Dean, Dean Farland.
Dean Farland, 31 DeForest Lane. Grew up here my entire life. My family is at DeForest. I just can't believe you'd take a deeded piece of land like that that is supposed to be for recreation use and put a tower on there. What's wrong with the Old Town Hall site? There's no houses around that. What's wrong with the Freihoffer site? They had a tower on there. There's other sites to look at instead of right in our backyard. You know, I just, I can't believe that that's the only place a tower will work, you know. So everybody else has touched on the health benefits, but I think you need to look at the other places there is for that. Thank you.
Dave Farland, 2146 Route 55, right across the road. Lived there all my life. When that used to be hay fields in front of our house, when Ray Vail's farm used to hay it. And now the trees have grown. You can't see 55 anymore. Only thing I see is the mountain across where my brother lives. And now I'm going to see a cell tower. No. So like they have all, you know, spoken about everything with the health and everything, but just, no. That's all I got to say. The scenery, the scenery of the woods. So, thank you.
Paul Ackerman?
Gating Supervisor, Town Board, Paul Ackerman, Wallace and Wallace, 85 Civic Center Plaza, Poughkeepsie, New York, Town Attorney for the Town of Beekman. I just want to convey that I think the Town of Beekman is concerned with the pace that this review process is going at. I think that there's legitimate concerns from the town residents of the Town of Beekman who mostly, or who will mostly be impacted by the, this cell tower. I think that there should be more negotiations between the Town of Beekman and the Town of Unionvale as to how this process will continue or move forward. The Town Board of the Town of Beekman has expressed that it is intention that the Town of Beekman should be rightfully so conducting this Monroe analysis and the governmental immunity test. We're concerned with the process of seeker. We believe that there has been a segmentation of the secret process which was inappropriate. It should be a coordinator review. We believe that there's some entities that were not included in the secret process that should have been identified as involved agencies or at least interested parties. We found out after our planning board meeting the other day that the EAF incorrectly lists the property as being in a R90 zoning district where clearly it is zoned as a LC which prohibits the installation of telecommunications devices and also public utilities, including a town hall. So if the Town of Beekman is prohibited from installing these type of facilities, we think that rightfully so, other municipalities intruding on the municipality should also be subject to those zoning requirements. So I think that I'm here today to just express on behalf of the Town of Beekman that we would like the process to, to slow down a bit. We would like to discuss resolutions to these issues with regard to seeker, with regard to who's conducting the Monroe analysis, and to discuss those nine balancing points within the governmental immunity test. Also, I believe that there is a, was not seeker completed. I believe that the Town Board is going to have to pass a municipal home rule legislation for alienation of the parkland, which would be subject to seeker. I do not see a seeker circulation for that specific act, which is an act of this Town Board and subject to seeker. So we would like to be involved in the process. We would like to work with the Town of Unionvale. We would like to take the concerns of the residents of the Town of Beekman, most of who are here today, into consideration and work and come up with a resolution to solve these issues that both impact Unionvale and the Town of Beekman.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kira Gorman. I'm Chief of Staff for Assemblyman Kieran Lawler. I'm just here tonight to observe, take notes, take concerns, get information from the cell tower company and also obviously the board. So I just want to thank everybody for bringing their voice, voice here tonight. And we will bring this information back to Assemblyman Lawler and just let him know what's going on in the district. So thank you.
Thank you, Kira.
Hi, Janet Townsend, 6, or 20, DeForest Lane. I didn't come prepared to speak. I didn't know that was going to be an option. But I've lived there for almost 50 years. I've seen a lot of changes to the neighborhood. And I think what attracts the neighbors and the people on the road is the ruralness, the mountains, and, and the safety and feeling secure there without any, you know, environment issues or anything of the sort. Most of us are not high-income people, so if this thing is going to lower our values of our property and our houses, that's going to be really hurtful for the finances for the most of us. You know, and the health issues that we've gone over many times is a very deep concern of all of us. We've all been hit with cancer in our families. And if this thing is going to affect our health, it's not good. It's not good. And to look out my back window or drive up my road and look and see this big tower thing there, it takes away from the rural beauty of the area. So as many people have said, slow down and research the health effects of this thing. Nobody, none of us wants to be affected by health issues and suffer in our later years or even the future of the young children that are in the neighborhood. When I moved in, there were no children, except for mine. And I've seen young, young families move in with children, young children. I've watched many of them grow up. I've watched the Bernharps. I've seen a lot, been there for almost 50 years. And it's, it's the ruralness that we want and we want to keep. And we don't want any health issues or devaluation of our hard-earned properties that we have there. And again, they're, you know, we don't live in a wealthy neighborhood, I don't believe. I mean, I'm sorry?
20 seconds. 20 seconds till.
Okay. So what we do have, we want to hold on to it and we want to keep that value. Thank you.
Aaron Bernhardt, 2191 Route 55. I agree, I agree with a lot of what everybody says here. My concern is mainly about the health, health concerns. And I'm looking at the map and I'm seeing a tower that's close to houses. Now, if you expand that map, there's a lot more forest. And my big concern is, and I should have asked this, I guess, before, but, you know, has it been, would another area in the forest, you know, be qualified, you know, for, under coverage analysis of some sort? That's all. It just looks like it's being put the fair minimum away from houses. That's all. That's my big concern. Thanks.
Natalie? Natalie Bernhardt? Are you sure? Okay. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything? Any speakers that haven't spoken yet? Any?
Declan Magnini, 22 DeForest Lane. So yes, the limitations for the tower to be away from somebody's property is 500 feet. So they're at 506 feet from the nearest property. I just feel like it wasn't given, we weren't getting enough respect from, from the big company because, oh, we're within the law. But it doesn't matter how it affects you. I understand at EMS, I was a firefighter for 15 years. I volunteered for almost all that time. I've made many calls and got reception through radio frequencies. We had pagers. Now, yes, we're using cell phones, but I lived right on DeForest Lane and I've never had a dropped call on my cellphone. Yes, my wife, because she has Sprint, she did. But, but, but most of the time I have no problem getting cell services in my area. Yes, I don't think it's going to help 55. I still think if you're driving on 55, you're still not going to get service in between the margins. But my main concern is that we have three young kids, we have two dogs, we walk them in that area all the time. We're out there sometimes for hours around that property. What they have done for us is they've made it unusable. It's a public park and we can't use it. That's one of the big things. Our kids love that area. We have, we have new family down at the end of the street. They won't bring their kids there now. We have neighbors across the street. They won't use that area now. It's a public park with a big commercial tower going in the middle of it with no definite answers towards what it's going to do to our health. And I think it's very unreasonable for it to try, this to go through quickly without every And I think it's very unreasonable for this to go through quickly without everybody in this room's questions answered and their concerns answered. No matter what the big money says, we are little money. And we're going to be even little in money because of our property. And I know this from being in Westchester and Scarsdale, you can't get a tower because they're not going to let it affect their property because they pay so much taxes. We pay taxes here. Is this tower going up making money for Unionville going to bring our taxes down? Absolutely not. So we won't be able to sell to get the full value of our property because I would, if I drove up to my house to buy my house today and see a big tower at the end of my street, I would turn the car around and drive back down the road and be like, sorry, Nora. I would not be nowhere near it. So I think we need to look at it. It is, it was always public property. It was there for the public to use and now we can't use it. So that's, I think that we need to take a look at that soon because it doesn't only affect our end of the mountain, it also affects the other side on Doran Road and Duncan where people have horses and the square in and people walk their dogs and people live. So that's all, I think we need to look at it a little more. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anybody else? Okay. Looks like we've exhausted everybody. We, our plan is to keep this public hearing open for two weeks so that we can get more information from Homeland Towers. They're producing more reports and doing more work and we're going to be getting it. It'll all be on a file at the clerk's office. Anybody can get it. We send updates out on Unionvale Mail so that some, so our folks get it on email when something is new. We send the information over to Beekman so the Town Hall and Beekman will have it and the planning board, they're both receiving the information. So we will definitely keep you posted. And if anything, if you want to write us, we'll probably schedule another meeting. We will be scheduling another meeting, but if you have anything to say in the meantime or you'd like to write anything down, please send it to us so that we can make copies for the board and have everybody look at it, okay? So at this point, we, our plan was to reconvene on June 4th, which is two weeks from tonight. And then we also have a Town Board meeting on Thursday. So I'm going to ask the board now, would you like to, our plan is to keep this hearing open, but just adjourned for two weeks. So that means we reconvene on the 4th or?
I'll make that motion.
So we're doing that. Well, no, we can use the courthouse. Yeah, we've got space, the courtroom, not the courthouse. So, no, we'd have plenty, but thank you. Go ahead. You were in the middle of.
I make a motion that we reconvene this town hearing on June 4th.
Tuesday, June 4th. Is there a second?
Second would be 7:00 p.m. as well.
7:00 p.m.?
That's it.
Modify that? Okay. June 4th at 7:00 p.m. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All aye. No one opposed. Motion carries. We'll reconvene here two weeks in this town hall. If we switch, depending on who's got the bigger crowd, we might get the bigger room or depending, we'll wait and decide. But we'll put signs up when you come that evening. And if there's anything that happens in the meantime or if you'd like to talk to any of us, we'd love to hear from you. We will be sharing information and we'd like to hear more of your comments. So as we deliberate this, okay? We have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is adjourned. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Think Tim's adjourned the meeting?
I just got a message. It's almost like.
There's still no one?
Yeah. No, no.